Well, the time is 4:30 PM. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of 31 August 2021 is called to order. I'd ask those in the audience this evening if you have not signed the flipboard up by the door when you came in, if you would sign that before you leave, please. And everyone in the council chambers, if you have a cell phone, please put them on vibrate. We'll call a member, Danielle.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markrath.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here to our August 31 city council meeting. Those in the council chambers, also those that will be are zooming into our council meeting and those that will be watching on Channel 14 on Wednesday evenings. I just have a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. Monday, September 6th, this next Monday, is Labor Day, so city hall offices will be closed. And our next city council meeting will be on September 14th at 4:30 PM here in the city council chambers. Is there any other announcements? Any other announcements? Harry Nuttall, please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments other than what's listed on the agenda? Anyone? Okay, same. Item number three is additions and deletions to the agenda. There's one addition under item number 14, the Bullet Point Planning Commission. We're going to also have a subdivision there, approval of new planning commission member. So under item 14, Planning Commission, add approval of new planning commission member. Any other additions or deletions?
Move to approve of the addition.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I will read. Item 4A is approval of council minutes of August 10th, 2021. Item 4B is approval of council payable listing. Item 4C1 is list report, which is in your packet. Item number 4C2 is utility report, which is in your packet. Is there a motion to approve? Go move. Second. Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same, motion carried. Item number five, 2024 street project downtown business owners and Councilman Strand handed out the packet. Did you want to read that discussion, Councilman Strand, or did you have something?
Mayor, Matt Strand's been working on this real hard, and I would like him to present what he has to say. You can explain the handout.
Okay.
Rick, do you want to lead off?
Oh, really? You were right.
I would ask those that come forward to speak if you introduce yourself in the microphone, please.
Okay. I'm Rick Wesby, retired businessman. And there's reasons I'm here, because I didn't like what I seen right away and why I got involved. Safety was one reason. When they had the plan to bring the bike lane out to the driver's lane, that was not a factor anymore, but that's kind of what got me going. And then to do away with the roundabouts, that's one of my issues. And then the loss of parking. And that can be devastating, and it can be a lot of dollars, them losses. If you take, there's 30 businesses there about, and about 60 parking lots, parking spots. And if you put an equation to it, it comes out that each parking spot can generate up to $100,000. That's saying if each business downtown has a gross sales of 200,000, which is low, and multiply it out and then divide, and you come up with $100,000 per spot. So 10 lots is $1 million, 14 lots is 1.4 million, that those spots help generate each year. That's a lot of money. And then another thing is, how many students do we let out of school and go down them streets that are that high to that high and hit that intersection? I would rather be a controlled intersection instead of confused intersection. And other than that, that's all I got to say. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Matt Strand, for the record. My wife Liz and I own Ace Hardware downtown Pelican Rapids. So Rick came in and we started having discussions following the MINDOT demonstrations this summer. And we were getting broad feedback downtown that the narrowed lanes were very unpopular. Have you ever parked alongside traffic and said, "Man, I wish the traffic was closer when I opened my door"? I don't think anybody has. And finally, we decided it's time to start getting a group of business owners together and to start discussing what we need for utility out of the streets in Pelican Rapids to continue commerce the way we do it while still fulfilling what we're trying to accomplish with the Complete Streets Project of 2024, which is multimodal transportation lanes through downtown. So through a lot of discussions, we kind of formulated a couple requests. Number one would be lane layout, especially for like the wide load and oversized load community like Aggies, Victory Homes, all our farmers. They need to be able to bring oversized loads through town. To do that, we need adequate curb-to-curb width, like we have right now. MINDOT will not allow lanes wider than 12 feet and parking wider than 10, so we need to find a way to create more width. So going through the proposed layouts from the Complete Streets study, one of the layouts actually popped up where they put the bike lane between the parked cars and the driving cars. And essentially, if you do that right now, you have the striping we have right now between the parking and the drive lanes. Through this, you maintain adequate width for oversized loads, and essentially, you're maintaining your curb-to-curb width. It would satisfy the needs of complete streets. It's essentially a MINDOT layout that's already been proposed, and it's going to enable safer parking, not stop stepping into traffic, you name it. Accomplishes everything we need. Second piece that's come up is the roundabouts at the intersections. Been concerned over those for a couple different reasons. MINDOT likes the roundabouts due to traffic throughput and traffic safety. From a traffic throughput standpoint, we do get some backups at the intersections at certain times in the summer, but generally, I feel it's not a big issue. From a safety standpoint, roundabouts are proven to reduce severe injury and minor injury crashes. It's absolutely true. But depending on what studies you look at, you can see increases in pedestrian crashes, increases in bicycle crashes, and increase in property damage only crashes. While that, you know, there's different studies on it, but one study I'm going to look at, it was out of Vancouver, Canada, and I can provide the study to the council if they'd like. The conclusion from it was, the study confirmed an excess risk at traffic circles in Vancouver for people cycling and found a slight increase for people walking. It also found a decrease in risk for motor vehicle occupants, just like MINDOT claims. So in a lot of ways, we could be experiencing more pedestrian crashes, more cyclist crashes, while reducing injury vehicle crashes. Thing with injury vehicle crashes, this is data from MINDOT, at the two Highway 108-59 intersections from 2010 to 2020, there was one property, or excuse me, one minor injury crash, no severe injury crashes. There were some possible injuries and some property damage only, but the main type of injuries we're trying to prevent with roundabouts generally do not occur. We have a very safe street layout, as is. And with the roundabouts and generally overall, parking, parking's a continual issue downtown and in town. First, to continue commerce downtown, we need adequate parking. We cannot accept any loss of parking. You know, even if they take out street parking, they move it three blocks away, still doesn't help us. We need better parking. And finally, the project's proposed to take two years. I think we need to examine that and see if we can cut that down to one season. Two years would be catastrophic for our downtown business district. It's just too much to miss out on, especially for a lot of the food businesses and restaurants who already just suffered through COVID. If we can examine that critical path, it's a project management tool to look at, how can we shorten the duration? Can we add more resources at certain times? How can we examine that? Do you have anything else? So what we, as the business owners, we went around and tried to gain consensus, and that's kind of what you see in the packet. And we got sign off from 104 local businesses. That's more businesses than there are members in the Chamber of Commerce in Pelican Rapids, I believe. And most of these are in Pelican, or farmers, or rural businesses near Pelican, and a couple in Ehrhard and one in Coromarant, who do a lot of commerce in town. 104 businesses in the Pelican Rapids area support what we are putting forward. And that is maintain curb-to-curb width while working with MINDOT to do so, because MINDOT has some requirements of that, no net loss of parking, maintain stoplight-controlled intersections. Oh, I forgot one other point. In addition to the roundabouts for the oversized traffic, while it does fit through in a vacuum, couple recommendations. One recommendation from the Department of Transportation said suitable locations for many roundabouts should have low truck volume and comparable traffic from all major and minor approaches. We have very heavy traffic from the 59 approaches, some traffic from 108, minor traffic from Mills, so we don't really have even traffic approaches. So for that MINDOT, or not MINDOT, excuse me, U.S. Department of Transportation, we're not super well-suited for them. Beyond that, one big thing we're not talking about is the safety at crossings. We already talked about how roundabouts can cause pedestrian injuries. Without a light-controlled intersection, how do children, elderly, or visually impaired persons cross the street safely? Without that finite green light, it's safe for me to cross, you know, how will my little boy get down to Esquire's to get ice cream? He'll have to be 12 years old before he's old enough to tell it's safe to cross. So in summary, we have a safe layout now. It's functional for our needs, and it works well. We're going to have to make some tweaks to it to support the Complete Streets Project and the bike throughput, but within our curb-to-curb widths and the utility we need, I think we can make recommendations to MINDOT that will support what the businesses need. Does the council have any questions of me?
Any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. MINDOT, excuse me, Matt, while you're still there. MINDOT does not know about this at this time.
No, I didn't feel it was my place to go to MINDOT. I feel that would be a city discussion to have with them. You know, you're our first step in our government chain. We have coordinated with Jordan Rasmussen a little bit, and he's expressed some willingness to try and work with MINDOT. He hasn't taken a strong stance on the issue, but he's willing to help us work with MINDOT.
Okay. Thank you.
Brent, can I ask you a question, Matt? Under the issue one, you got that lane layout that you chose in the Complete Streets study. Why did you guys choose that one as opposed to one of the ones that were actually being considered in the plan up to this corner?
Sure. So that layout's the only one that has adequate curb-to-curb width for oversized traffic. The other ones narrow the curbs in, and once you park cars on both sides and bring a semi on one side, a 16-foot load just can't make it through. So that was just, you know, during the demonstration when they narrowed down the lanes, we had a semi breakdown, we were down to one lane traffic. For full length, you know, or full width Victory Home goes through, we're down to one lane traffic. We have a lot of instances where we're down to one lane traffic with the proposed layout going through town, so we need that curb-to-curb width. Any other questions?
You say you have 104 signed?
Yeah, and I can read them off if you'd like.
No, I saw them.
Are you sure?
I've got them right here.
Well, we have all the signed copies of them. I'd be happy to read off all the businesses if the council would like.
Yeah, I didn't see that one.
We only had one refusal of 104.
Say again?
We only had one refusal, and then one that didn't want to get involved.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment in the audience? Anyone else? No, your chance.
I move to endorse the business community recommendations and request MINDOT incorporate them into the final plan. Maintain curb-to-curb width, bike lanes between the parked cars and the driving lane, no net loss of parking, maintain stoplight control of intersections, and limit the project duration to one year.
I'll second. Okay, motion second, discussion? Discussion?
You know, bottom line for me is, we cannot lose parking. And nothing against roundabouts, you know, the country, the safe lives and so on, but this just decimates our downtown, losing parking. And MINDOT went, I assume it was MINDOT went to a lot of work to, you know, push button and talking in the light and all that business, and now that's out, apparently, right? So with this roundabout, as Matt said, his little guy, there's no way for a child or someone that can't hear to cross safely. It just doesn't make any sense.
What I see is this, you know, we can pass this motion presented, but that's not saying they're going to do what we recommend.
COVID understands, but we're...
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
What, I don't quite know how to phrase this. The process MINDOT is going through, I know we've got some more hearings or public meetings.
On September, there's going to be a public meeting at the school.
So do we have any information on that process?
John, do you know anything about that?
But all I know right now is with, from what they've kind of mentioned, is with the COVID variant ramping up in Minnesota, that they want to have a face-to-face meeting. That's what the public input meetings were all about, and getting direct face-to-face interaction and comments from the community. But now they're thinking because of the COVID stuff, they're probably going to have to do it virtually. They still plan on doing it, but the logistics of getting it all worked out, we haven't been told yet.
If they move that to virtual meetings, I would then propose we can't be push this project off, because there's too many people that don't get involved on those online virtual meetings, elderly, that just, they don't participate in. And we've seen that in meetings we've had. If we, if they push to have those as virtual meetings, their input meetings, I will push that we postpone this project.
One of the things, the last meeting that they had that they listed as virtual too, we basically had that meeting and invited anybody that wanted to to come up to City Hall, because we had it up on the screen here. We did have a couple people show up. But when I say virtual, from what I understand, from their end, MINDOT's, all their state agencies are going back in their, you know, whatever, in their table, wherever they go, but they can't come, but that doesn't mean we can't use the technology and put 400 people in the auditorium and have them on the screen. We can all be there, and we can all listen to the conversations and the questions being asked and all the comments and stuff like that. They just won't be in attendance other than virtually, if that's the way it shakes out.
Any other questions?
I would like to low call.
Yes, Danielle.
Strand.
Hi.
Ballard.
Hi.
Markrath.
Hi.
Foster.
Name.
Frazier.
Hi. Okay, motion passed. We'll present this information to MINDOT, and I guess let's see where it goes from there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If we can do anything, we will help.
Okay. We understand your concern.
Absolutely, we can help.
Just trying to stay organized in one of these public input meetings are taking place to show up.
Yeah, we'll do some promoting on that.
Take the podium where necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't have to go now. We've got a bunch of stuff to talk about.
All interesting stuff.
Thank you again.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, item number six is, you can contract up.
Yes. So the mayor and Councilman Markrath and I met with the union LELS two or three times over the course of our contract negotiations. And, you know, they presented a couple proposals to us, or basically, the first proposal was the one we started with, and then we kind of went from there. But just to give you an idea of what they were proposing, they wanted a three-year contract, they wanted a 4% cost of living adjustment each of them three years, as well as a change to the vacation accrual, so they accrue more vacation, or accrue their vacation at a faster rate, more holiday pay, paid holiday time, a faster accrual of the sick time off, they wanted additional paid leave, they wanted weekend paid differential, like we have night differential now, and they also had, they wanted to add new language that dealt with, you know, mental health and indemnification issues. And obviously, on all these things, when they gave us a proposal, we did share this information with our labor attorneys, Flirry and Hood, and they gave us their input on them also. So after going back and forth, and us, to be honest with you, us saying a lot of no, 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 I think, I think the way I kind of read the union a little bit, I think they were starting to be a little frustrated, and he even commented a couple of times that it's really hard for him to take us saying no on everything back to the group and coming up with a solution. And so after the meetings, I pretty much wanted them just to concentrate on the cost of the living adjustments, you know, the wage and benefit side of things, the wage and health type side of things. They also did want to, did want to change the health insurance so that everybody got the same amount put in the HSA, and we said no to that. But at the end of the day, we just came down to a COLA and also a night differential increase, and they ultimately agreed to it, so it's basically tentatively agreed to and requiring approval by the council. But what we came up with was a two-year contract with a cost of living adjustment each of those two years at 3.25, and also we added a quarter, 25 cents to their night differential. One of the things that they shared, and we did, you know, kind of was able to look at and verify, was that I know the council, council in the past wanted to kind of, with our wage study, wanted to kind of stay in that midpoint. They didn't want to be the highest paid department, you know, per hour, or the lowest. They want to be at that midpoint. And based on other cost of living adjustments and stuff, we were starting to drop off of that a little bit. And so the 3.25 gets us back to, I would say, depending on how you're looking at it, full-time versus part-time, back closer to that midpoint. We definitely aren't on the high side of the midpoint. We're more either midpoint or low side. So all in all, what this does for the police department, not counting the key, for just the patrol officers, what this amounts to is about a $9,800 for 2022 increase. So, barring any questions or any additional comments from Mayor Frazier, Councilman Markrath, that would mean a motion to approve signing of the union contracts, just those two items.
Questions for the council?
I'll move to approve the, yeah, approve the signing of the...
Motion second. Discussion? Discussion?
You guys have already done that, Matt?
No, no, we, I know myself, Matt's explained everything that we've met and talked about for quite some time.
We've talked several times. There was back and forth, in a degree, honestly, in my opinion, just short of probable arbitration.
And one of the union, the union that we, Twin Cities, we kept talking about was, you know, we're Pelican, sort of known as, Pelican Police Department is known as a starting point for a lot of young policemen because of wages. I'm not so sold on that idea, but we want to vote that out just to make sure we don't fall into that situation. That's all I have. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number seven is city employee COLA.
Yeah, so this is the nine union employees. And so our recommendation is to, for 2022, have a 3.25% cost of living adjustment for the nine union employees, which is what we typically do.
Is there a motion?
No.
Second. Motion second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Item number eight, do we want to go into that? Is there pool committee members going to be here, Don? We can hold off on it.
I think we can go into it.
Going to it.
I'm going to change screens, though.
So this is an FYI, just a talking point here. Item eight, move pool, discussion.
Yeah, so I'm going to have this up on the screen. So what I'm going to talk about, I've got a lot of information, a lot of information. And so, think of questions, write down questions as we go. One of the things I want to do is, I'm going to start by just, I want to share some information with you guys. On September 28th, oh, excuse me, September 22nd, at 8 o'clock in the morning, the House Investment, or Capital Investment Group, the Senate, and the House, and the Governor all have their own bonding projects that they are working on. The House's bonding project list includes our pool, and it includes the bridge over the dam. I put both of them things into the system. So on September 22nd, at 8 o'clock in the morning, a bus, one of the big coach buses, is going to pull up to the pool, and about 20 House of Representatives people are going to get off of that thing, along with who else might be with them. And they are going to tour our pool facility. Our pool committee, the mayor, myself, Brian Olson, and the Streets Department is all going to be there to help answer questions and tour them through the condition of our building and our existing pool. We're going to post that, that the potential of a quorum of the council, the planning commission, the park board, the pool committee may be at that gathering. I would strongly encourage all the elected officials to be there that morning, just to show your support for the pool project. I think it's very important. Having said that, I'm going to go over, one of the things that we're looking at is the bonding package or the funding for the pool. And there's the, do we bond, all the city bond for, or do we basically, you know, the bottom line is, do we take it on ourselves, or do we wait for state funds to help? So some of those things I'm going to cover today involve, first off, up on the screen, is the information that I got from Northland Securities, our financial advisor. And this, basically, this scenario is if the city takes on the bond themselves, okay? And we'll talk more as we get to the budget stuff, but, so the information that she provided, we have, from what I'm told by the pool committee and West Central Initiative, we have $1 million in the bank, which means that if we have a $4 million project, we only need to bond for $3 million, but there's financing costs. So up on the screen, I'm going to try and see if I can increase this a little bit, maybe you can see, but this is the package that we got from Northland Securities, and you'll see up at the top, it's a $3 million bond, but we've got about $85,000 in bonding costs. And that's with that first page, this was in the packets, the first page kind of lays out that $85,000, how we get that $85,000 cost, okay? The next page that was in your packet... The next page that was in your packet is the debt service. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this stuff because it's in there. You can ask questions if you want and believe me, we're going to have more discussions at further council meetings coming up regarding this information, this stuff. But, so this is if, the debt service schedule, if the city took on this, this $3 million by ourselves. And what this is basically saying, you can see that in 2023, we would have roughly about a $50,000 interest-only payment on the debt service for this bond. Starting in 2024, we had $130,000 in principal. And then there's also interest charges and et cetera, et cetera. But way over on the far right, it gives you an idea of what our, what our special levies would have to be each year during this 20-year bond. And it can only be a 20-year bond because of the type of project it is. And then the last page basically is also just calling out that levy. You can see there's actually, the actual levy itself, and then there's actually, this net levy is actually the debt service portion of that levy or the interest part of it. So you can see again what all of our levies would have to be, principal and interest. This 105% levy, anytime you do a bond, the city is supposed to actually set their levies 5% higher than what's actually needed. That's, that's been in every bond issue, whether it's a tax abatement bond or a general obligation. If you ever look at that paperwork close enough, it all includes that. So, so this is basically the information that Tammy sent over to us. Then the other thing that I did was included in here a schedule of doing this bonding. And if you think about the tentative schedule that we had, if we go forward with the bidding process, they were talking about, I think the last thing that we had seen from the architect, that they were going to be able to have all the plans and spec documents done in time to go out for a bid. And I know it was kind of pushed, pushed back a little bit because everybody, all the engineering firms or the guys that he's using are so busy with stuff that it got pushed back about a month. But the plan was that we'd be through the bidding process and we would know what that bid was going to be on the pool project in November. Well, so what I asked Tammy to do was kind of give us an idea of a timeline for this bidding process where we actually wanted to go forward. And that's what this, this thing in your packet shows you. It kind of shows that at some point, the council would be calling a public hearing, looks like it got set up for December 14th, calling for a public hearing on the tax abatement because we have to do that on bonds. In this particular case, because this is a, a city facility, it's got to be tax abatement. It can't be a general obligation or a revenue bond. So it has to be tax abatement bond. So it kind of just lines out the timeline of getting to the point where we actually close on the bonds. While we're going through this whole process, Northland Securities takes us through this whole process. She comes and she presents stuff off that public hearing, provides this updated information and all that stuff. There's no cost to the city until we actually get to this March 9th where we actually close on bond. That's just the way Northland Securities works as financial advisors for cities. If we, if we decide someplace in this process we never close on bond, they don't send us a bid. Okay? So that's what, that's what this timeline kind of shows. It does take us out to March, and if you think about the timeline for the bid opening, we'd know what the bids are in November, and then we'd be able to go ahead and, you know, award the bid and then start working towards the bond. So we kind of set this up in that line of thinking. So it kind of would all kind of line up and play out okay if we go forward with it. Then the last thing that I provided in here was, and this is just all estimates, very important that you remember, it's just all estimates on any of this information that she sent us because of the fact that interest rates could change. Things have changed between now and the end of the year. So anyway, this is kind of a sample of what the tax impact would look like if we bonded for that $3 million for 20 years. The annual debt service is estimated to approximate that $200,000. Our 2021 net tax capacity is the number used in here, and that's 1.181 million tax capacity in the city. And so here it kind of just breaks down, if you're residential property at $100,000, your property taxes are going to go up by $122 a year when this thing kicks in. And then you can kind of see the rest of them too. So, when you, when you, when we start to talk about the budgets, are there any questions on this stuff? Because when we start talking about the budgets, I'll, I'll point out a little bit more specifically how this impacts, if we go forward by ourselves, how this impacts the 2022 budget. And I'll even can, you know, just kind of take it to the 2023 budget a little bit too. So we'll be talking about that. I have nothing for you guys to prove at this point. But, one of the things that I want to just touch on is one of the other pieces of paper that wasn't in the packet because I just sat down last night at home and kind of went through it. And I wanted to, I typed it up today instead of in front of your packet. But this is kind of a, I might be jumping ahead a little bit, maybe not. But this is kind of a pros and cons for pool funding. Y'all have it, see it coming here? So, just to kind of get the conversation started, to have you guys something in front of you that kind of breaks this all down a little bit. And this might not be all the pros and cons, just what I thought of. But if the city decides, we need, we need $1.5 million additional, and this pool is ready to go. If we don't wait for state funds and we decide to use city bonding only, basically, if you look at the pros of that, that means our funding is guaranteed because we're bonding for it. But the other pro of it is we can move ahead with the new pool this winter as planned. The downside of not waiting for state is it restricts other uses of tax abatement funding. And what that means is every city is allowed so many dollars worth of tax abatement that they can use in their planning process. Because of our net tax capacity, the most that the city of Pelican Rapids can tax abate in any given year is $200,000. Well, we have about $35,000 that we already abate on that project, the apartment project for about 13 years. We also have a program for housing that we're, that we put together. Anybody that builds a new house can come and ask for tax abatement from the city to help, you know, tax refund. And I figured, just for the sake of having a number, when, when I talked to Tammy Omdal at Northland Securities, they have an idea, I told her, figure $12,000 a year for that abatement, plus the 35, so they're up to 47. This, if you noticed on that, on that other slide, there's $130,000 there that would come into play on this pool project. So now we're up to about 170 something. We've only got about $20,000 gap and we hit that $200,000 a year of tax abatement money. So, so I mention that because, because when we look at other projects in the city, whether it's the senior center and what might have to be done to that building, and we already know that something's got to be figured up there, or the bridge down there, those are public infrastructure projects that need funding. When you have public infrastructure projects, they need to be, if we bond for it, it's tax abatement bond. So in a nutshell, if we go without the state, we're not going to be able to fund those other two projects with tax abatement. We're going to have to figure out a different way of doing them projects if we were even going to use tax abatement for those. We know the bridges, our portion of the bridge is 250,000 roughly, we guessed it, if the state gives us 250,000. The senior center, we have a real broad estimate of about a half a million to three quarters of a million dollars to upgrade that building. But that's yet to be decided because we need to hire an architect, which will be a ton of the budget, to try and figure what that project is, okay? So by going along, we restrict our use of tax abatement funding in the future until some of this other stuff plays out. And when, go back to the housing part of it. I told her $12,000 because we max out on the, anybody requesting on a new home, we max out at $5,000. Five years or $5,000 from city taxes. So realistically, if you think about some overlap, you know, just a real jump, rough estimate, if somebody puts up a house like the one down, that they already applied for and are getting a tax abatement, I'm guesstimating that their, their property taxes are going to be about $4,000, let's just say, it's a duplex. If we did three houses a year and they were all about $4,000, we're tapped out until they hit their max and open us up to be able to do another one. So I, so, so, you know, we have that $20,000 tax abatement gap. So we could potentially do four houses or five houses, but that's, that's getting pretty close to our limit. The other thing about this, going, the bonding on our own, it means that in 2022, the special levy, which you'll see in the budget, we have to add $60,000 roughly to the special levy just to cover the abatement portion of us on this pool project if we go forward without state help. And then in 2023 and beyond, we have to add another, on top of the 65, or not, on top of the 60, we have to add another 195,000 each year for 20 years, starting in 2023. The other, bad part about going our own is we would have limited or no pool for 2022 next year, which we all knew, we all knew that was going to happen if we, if we move ahead this winter with the project. And then the other part of it is, we all want to see what them bids come in at in November. We're waiting for that, which is fine, we need to wait for that. But there is the possibility, and we know that if we go, if we, if we then decide to wait for the state or whatever the case may, or we still go along, we're going to have to rebid this thing because it's sort of going to be potentially increased bonding cost due to higher amount if it's needed. Okay. And then if you, if you think about waiting for the state in the 2022 legislative session, if we wait for them and we ask them to get, to provide $1.5 million, if you look at the pros there, we can still use the pool next year because we haven't torn it down yet. It reduces the tax impact, the numbers that you saw up there, and these numbers that we're looking at, it knocks down about less than half because we're actually going to need to bond for 1.5 million instead of 3 million. So the bonding costs are cheaper and everything else. That, that's still, then it takes, it cuts that 130,000 tax abatement levy in half, which really increases our ability to use tax abatement for other projects in the city that would qualify for that. It delays the tax impact from all of our residents and businesses by one year. They're going to have a tax impact, but it will be less and it'll be delayed a year. And it also would allow for more time to do fundraising. Now, I know the pool committee is, they're tired. But this would allow a little bit more time to do more fundraising to help even maybe buy down that bond a little bit more if we're pushing it out one more year. The bad side of waiting for the state, there's no guarantee. They could say that the next bonding bill, they're not giving us anything. And then the decision on the city is, do we go ahead? And we know that at that point, if we move ahead, it's going to cost us more in inflation or whatever the case may be, having that delayed. And then even, even if the state funds us and we've delayed it by a year because we waited for that funding, it still is going to increase the price because we're going to have to rebid it again because their bids aren't going to be any good anymore. So there will be some added cost. But if we get a million and a half dollars from the state, that's surely going to go a long ways to help if there's any increase in inflation for materials or whatever the case may be. It's still going to be a net less cost to the city. But it does delay the project, point number three, it does delay the project for a year. Also, the second bullet, we will not know until the 2022 legislative session or later. So we won't even know if we're going to get money until May. We might see that we're, whether we're on the lists or not, if they're even talking about us or not. We'll have to go down and testify again. But we won't know until the session ends and they actually sign off on bills to know whether we actually got funded and did we get 1.5 or did we get less. Usually they give you what you're looking for, you know, drop it down. I shouldn't miss when I say that, but maybe. But there's also the possibility that in May, we won't know because they won't have it figured out, just like this year. They'll go in a special session and tell who knows how long. So there's some risk there. We will have to go through the rebidding process, so that'll drive up costs a little bit. And I'm just guesstimating, but I think to rebid it, it just means advertising it. And going through the advertising costs, we'll have to use Scott a little bit again. So we'll have to pay him a second time to go through that process. So it might cost us, you know, I don't know, four, five, six thousand dollars to go through that again, I don't know. And then there's also the possibility of cost due to inflation, potentially increase cost in the project altogether. So this is just something I wanted to throw up, and you guys might even have other things that you could think of as to why we want to do one versus the other. But, the one thing I want to point out is, and this is what Tammy said too, to go forward without waiting for the state and the city funding this whole 1.5 or $3 million bond, it puts the city in a really tight financial position. Because we have no mon, we're tapped out as far as tax abatement fund. And so, I have to agree with her point that in this particular case, it's in the city's best interest to wait for funding from the state if we can get it. The only other thing that I'll mention is, and I didn't have anything on, on this pros and cons about it, but the state is coming up with a new program that's not even out yet, it's not expected to be out for a couple of months yet. But, it also will have an opportunity for us to ask for $1.5 million, and we might even have a better shot at getting funded that way. And if this program works out the way that it supposedly might, we might be able to use it to do this project this year, not having to wait a year. So.
We do a lot of stuff on supposedly.
Well, when you're dealing with the state, that's the way it is. You know, they've, they've got the funds, apparently they've got the funds that we put in a pocket. And now they're trying to put the, the application process together, the time period to put application, you know, you get applications in and all that type of stuff. And supposedly, it's money that, half of it's got to be spent in the metro and half of it's got to be spent in outstate. But the one thing that we got over anybody else, from what I'm being told, is with us sitting here with our plans and specs done on this pool, that we've been through the bidding process and now we can look at bonding from the state or maybe this opportunity, we're shovel-ready. And there is no other projects that we know of that would qualify for this particular program that is, is, that we know of, that is as shovel-ready as we are with this pool.
When are they expecting to roll out the transcript on this new project, or program?
They're supposedly supposed to have information on it by the end of October.
In this project is the most greater Minnesota friendly project than anybody else.
And it, and it, and it has, it has to do with, some of the criteria involve very low-income communities. And Pelican Rapids is the only opportunity zone, and that has, that, in Otter Tail County, but in a lot of counties in the state, we are the one small community that's an opportunity zone. And that's very telling when you want to talk about our income levels, our poverty levels, our diversity. That's all what that opportunity zone is about. And so, this program fits us very, very well, if they get it off the ground, and they're supposed to. If they get it off the ground, and they're supposed to, I mean, they're.
We're being told.
That's our house in the classroom, I'm sorry, now we need to.
And I have a question, I want to just fill in on something that Don has kind of touched on. A week ago, when we met on the budget, we were ready to proceed without waiting for the state. But Don in contacting Tammy on doll, and first suggestion is that we wait for the state because one, and this is probably the most important point, is that they're sending the House Bonding Committee up here to take a look at this project. When we went down there the first time for the pool, they said absolutely not. Now, maybe they've had some time to think about it, and at least they're coming up here to take a look at it. So this doesn't make our decision any easier. And actually, I think it makes it harder and more complicated because now we're going to depend on other people. If we were to wait for the state, we'd have to wait for what they decide to do. But the fact that they're coming to take a look at the projects, they're coming to take a look at the pool and this bridge project. And the bridge project is tied to the DNR project, the removing the dam. So we've got some possibilities here. The fact that they're coming here to look at this and, because Don mentioned all the areas that we qualify on, um, is probably worthwhile to wait.
One, one other tidbit of information, the fact that they're coming and they're going to look at the pool, we're also going to take them over and they're going to look at the dam, but we want to have the bridge. And we've got a lot of planning to do in preparation for them coming. Um, but there is some concern too that we've got two projects on the bonding bill. And you had to list them in order of priority for the city. So we listed the pool number one priority, the bridge number two priority. Now, there's always the possibility that they're going to give us the funding for one, but not the other. Um, there's also the possibility that they might say, hey, throw 250,000 at them for a bridge and they'll be happy and not give them pool money. So we hope they don't say, we'll fund the lower one and not the, the other one because the, the pool is our number one priority project. And we want to make sure that they understand that when, when they're here, so.
And Don mentioned that, you know, we're going to list this, this as a public meeting. So it's, it's important, the more council people we have there, we're going to invite the school administration and other community groups. There's always our number, so.
And we want to, we want to show at that gathering too, we would really like to show our, our community diversity, our ethnic diversity at that gathering. Nobody has to talk, you just need to be there.
What time is it on the.
It's at eight o'clock and we will, they will be in and out of here by nine, 10. They're going to spend 40 minutes at the pool, if it takes us that long, then they're going to walk over to the dam. Um, and then from the dam, walk back, get on their bus and leave. So by nine, 10, they will be gone. They have a, a tight schedule of every place they're going. They're going to stay in Fergus Falls the night before. We're their first stop the next day and they've got a long road to go after us, so.
How did the bus trip come about?
They do the bus, they do the bus trips every year, every, or every bonding year. Um, the, the House gets on a big coach and they take off. The Senate gets on a coach and they take off. They all go their different directions, looking at these communities that have these projects. Um, the House is coming here, uh, which is probably a good thing. Um, it'd be nice if the Senate would show up too, because they start negotiating over these projects during session. But, um, and then the governor's got his, but he doesn't come on the buses, but, so. You know, there is something to be said for the fact that they are coming to look at our project. Because that's the one thing they've never done before and they typically do go to sites that they fund. So, that doesn't mean we'll get it, but it's probably more likely than ever that we'd have a best chance this year.
And just, has anything changed at the pool that would? Because was it last year, the year before, that Brian stood at the meeting and said, we don't know from year to year whether the pool is going to pass us the head though? Has anything changed at the pool that we can guarantee the pool will open next year?
The only way, the, the only reason it's a guarantee, it's not from an inspection standpoint. It's about whether we put water in it and it holds water. That's what it really comes down to.
And he said it was the inspection, the state person that comes in and, you know.
There's, there's things, there's things that basically um, that are cold things that we haven't been in compliance with, that they understand that we're, we're trying to get a new pool. So I, I would venture to say that they're not going to shut us down for one year when it could be the very last year that we're going to have a pool.
No, the main reason there's a water leak there and can't retain water.
That's, that's the main reason. And, and so because we go through another winter of freezing and thawing, that's why we keep water in the pool to a certain level to keep the, you know, keep it from freezing down below it, uh, because we don't want them pipes to move around. Um, but there's, there, there is that possibility, it's happened because we've had leaks. And we fixed leaks, we tore up stuff, so.
That other mini bonding pool money Don talked about is, it's called equity funding in Minnesota.
Well, that's not what it's called, that's what he referred to it, the representative. That's not the, that's not the official name, but yeah. So, and he was off on a couple of other things, but the main gist of it, I've got a person from DED looking into it for us and I told them, as soon as that information is available, I want, I want an application. Because we are going, I told them already, we are going to submit an application for funding for that. Because if we can get that, we don't need the bonding, although we still want to try for it. But once we know we have that, we can just tell the state, the state we get it, and we can still do our project this year. That's the one key point of it.
Don, is there anybody on Zoom from the pool committee?
No.
Okay, I'm just waiting to hear them.
No, I'm surprised you're not here.
So, can you tell me again, this new fund?
It's, yeah, I, I don't have the name right in front of me, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a pocket of money that the, the state.
I'm in pocket.
A new, a new sum of money the state got from, I don't know if it's the federal government. We'll know more when this money comes out or when the information comes out. But apparently it's a, the state of Minnesota got, I've heard 24 and I've heard 18 million dollars that can be used for capital improvements in communities that meet this criteria that I just kind of talked about. Half of that money has to, can, is spent in the metro, but the other half of it, either nine or 12 million dollars, has to be spent outstate. And they've got it, they're just putting the program together. But he, our representative, just talked about, this fits Pelican so well because of the things I have identified. And so it's another opportunity to wait for the state or this. And I, and I laid out, so when you think about that project or that pocket of money, you can look at these pros and cons and a little bit of both come into play for that. Because um, the funding might not be guaranteed, but if we get it, we can start this year as opposed to delaying this thing another year. And when I say this year, I mean, we can go forward with the timeline that we originally talked about doing over the winter construction, so.
Did it get more on the pool before we moved to the budget?
No. So.
Do you need action on this at all?
No, not at all, it's just, it's information and, and all state going into the budget discussion.
Yeah, before we get into that discussion, this budget, proposed budget, budget we just put on there as an FYI, we do not have to act on that this night. And it'd be better if we didn't because Don's going to present a whole load of information for us to think about. And uh, it has to be done in September. And Danielle, could you tell us the timeline on that? When the.
Yeah, so we'll have to, I have to have it submitted to the county by the 30th of, on September. So we could wait up until the 28th and I still have time to submit it. If we pass it by, or on the 28th of September meeting.
So we have, we would actually have two more council meetings to discuss.
Yeah.
And that's kind of why, you know, we kind of are laying it all out today because the more time you guys get to think about this all, because I'm giving you so much stuff. Take this stuff and think about it and then, and then, um, you know, the next meeting, it'll be on the agenda. If we're at a point that by the next meeting, that we're good to go, based on what you guys have thought about, what we talked about the next meeting, we can, we can prove it. Um, if not, we'll wait one more minute.
Take her away, tell her closer.
I just wanted to make a couple of remarks before we started. This is my 12th budget, I think. Maybe the 13th, I don't know. It's the most complicated one. Don has spent a lot of time on it. He said it's the hardest budget he's been able, had to do. And when he went through it, I thought, holy moly, we got a lot here we got to cover. So we've got some options on how we want to handle it. I'm going to talk about, um, a little bit on what our options are, a little bit on the history, and then just I'll mention the projects real quickly here because they're all going to affect the budget and how we look at it. But our options are, we try and get through it tonight. That would be one day. We'll probably be here till midnight or six in the morning or something like that to get through it. Don can present it and we can come back to it at the next meeting. Or we can even have a special meeting to talk about the budget because there's so many different facets on this that we need to discuss. So those are kind of our options, but we do have to get this done by the end of September. So we've got two regular meetings, this meeting, and we could have a special meeting if we wanted to.
So at this point, it is a crunch time.
Yeah, it is a crunch time. Now, that covers the options. The history that I want to talk about is that in the past, we've always tried to keep our increases to basically cost of living, maybe a little bit more, having some small projects. But this year, we're looking at, I think, five different projects that we've got going on. We've got the swimming pool, we've got um, economic development, we have the bridge, the senior center. Yeah, those, those are the project, four projects I got. Um, the economic development is what's been a bump this budget up quite a bit. It's going to go up by about 18%.
The, the position.
That's position, yeah. If it worked out, that would pay for itself. But as we have learned sitting on this council, everything takes a lot longer than we expect it to. Um, but in the past, we've tried to keep our budget increases down. I think last year or the year before, we even reduced it a little bit because we were in such a good position that we reduced it. But with these projects, our budgets are going to go up substantially. And with this economic development director's position, you're going to see the first increase. Um, and that's only going to get better when we get into the swimming pool, uh, senior center, uh, bridge, depending on how the plans and produce go. And then on top of that, we've got the road project, which is another wrench in the gears that uh, is going to, could, could potentially affect our taxes a lot. Um, so state funding, I think, is extremely vital on that one. But um, come back to all of this. We've got some different options and we need to have some conversation about our liquor store run. And I don't want to get into that right now, but I just want you to plan the season. We need to have some conversation about how we want to use that. And that conversation alone, we think, could probably take a couple of hours. So that's one. Um, the other thing that we need to think about is, the taxpayers are going to pay for all of this. So, and they're, you know, one way or another, they're going to end up paying for it. So we need to be cognizant of that because they're going to get hit with that. And those three and four and maybe five and six percent increases are going to double or triple to go up with these projects. And yes, I think I covered the main points I wanted to and Don is going to go through this. When he went through this the other day, I think he spent about 45 minutes to an hour and that wasn't with very much interruption, he just pretty much rolled through it and explained some things and. And um, then we went ahead and at the end, you know, two hours, we was kind of, there's a lot here to go over, so.
Thank you.
I think we were tired looking at numbers when I. So, I don't know if you guys have copies in front of you, but I'll, you know, kind of explain things up on the screen too. In the draft I sent out, what I'm trying to do here, this 18% recalculates as I change numbers. So we can, depending on how much time you want to fart on tonight, we can do some manipulating or we can just take the information and come back another day. Um, this number here is the general levy that this budget has right now, based on the scenarios that this budget has in it. Uh, this here basically number, I have this number up here, it matches this one. This tells me that I've got the number set right. It's just a check and balance for me, that's all it is. As I change one number, I'll know how much I have to change the other one. And, and the one thing I want to say about this budget though, is this, this budget that, that's in the packet that's up here, represents the max budget scenario. So this is, all the projects he talked about are in here. So, you know, obviously, you know, you want to cut out one, that changes everything. Let me also say, there's, there's two levies. And I hope everybody at this point, being on the council this long, understand. You have a general levy and you got a special levy. This number, 18.8, is only the general levy. It's what's in the budget, it's not our debt service or anything else. We'll talk about that, I'll move down. This number down here is the special levy. That levy is made up of all these things in the box that are projects that the city has done or will do that we have to pay for through basically our collecting from our taxpayers, as this levy up here is also. So you can see there was a, right now, there's an 18.82% increase from the 733 last year to get to the 871 this year. Um, as you see number, I'm not going to cover all the numbers, but as you see numbers that you want, have questions on, ask them. But I'm going to try and highlight on the boxes, yes.
Can we make it a bit?
Sure, I can make it real big.
I can see it, I have four.
Yeah.
All right, good?
Thank you. All right. Don, I don't want to put the horse before the cart here, but at 18.82, that includes the Economic Development Director and the senior, old senior citizen building. And if we did not include them, then the percentage would drop down to.
It'd be flat.
Yeah.
So really that 18.2, and to be honest with you, yeah, that, that 18.8 is just those two positions. Or the, the Economic Development Director and hiring an architect to try and figure out what needs to be done with that building down there. If you took them out, it'd be nothing.
Not the bridge and?
Not the swimming pool, not anything?
No, the bridge, the bridge and the swimming pool is, well, depending on how we pay for it, would be special. But, and actually, that's all. The bridge is a whole nother conversation because, I'll, I'll just throw it, I'll throw this out there. If we get, the bridge is going to cost us 500,000, 480, I think, is what I've got from an estimate from the engineers so I could submit that application to the state. My thinking right now, just so you know, since you brought up liquor store funds, we have 300, there's different liquor store funds, but one of them has 356,000 dollars in it that's not used for operations. And then we have a checking account and a savings account that's used for operations that has money in it that should cover operations. If the state funds us, we're going to need 240,000 dollars. I didn't put anything in this budget because I, I want to propose that the 240 that we need for that bridge comes from the liquor store savings account. So out of that 356, or whatever it is, 350, I wanna spend 240 of that to put that bridge in over the water, if we get state funding.
Are we paying half for the bridge?
Yes.
And so, will you make the...
Well, no, no. The bridge, the bridge is estimated just under, it's about $480,000. That's everything. But, and we ask the state for, well, when you, when you submit an application to the state, you ask for half of what you need because you're gonna have to pay for the match. So I told them, the project is $480,000, we're requesting 240, knowing that that's all they're gonna give us because we have to have a 50% match.
On a side note, tell them how much the bridge cost us. Just the bridge itself, material.
Yeah.
This is just the bridge itself. A hundred-foot bridge costs $130,000 delivered. But there's the engineering of the abutments because of this, this is the problem, you're getting on this bad leg every time. The state bidding process ups everything astronomically for people, and that's why small communities have a hard time doing some projects because our $130,000 bridge, obviously, it needs abutments and engineering to put in anything else, is a five, is a half a million-dollar project, partly because of the state bidding process.
Reminds me of that cheap bridge we bought in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Was that like $18?
We got a, we got a deal on that one because they had it sitting there and they had nobody to buy it, and it was designed wrong.
$100 bridge?
We got a deal.
$100 ramps?
I actually asked him, do you have a hundred-foot long one you can't get rid of? He didn't, so we have to...
Sorry to side track you there.
Yeah, sorry, that's right. So anyway, going down this list, um, a lot of the numbers stayed the same, but when we look at the LGA increase that the state is giving us, they're giving us a whopping $7,000 more than they gave us last year through the whole, uh, LGA discussions that they had down here. And from what I understand, that's, that's guaranteed for 2022. We don't know what's gonna happen in 2022, so...
Essentially, that was soaked up once we approved the contract.
Yeah, yeah, the approval of the police contract ate all of that up, plus two grand. So, um... What I have in this budget then is, this yellow one down here is, this is how much I'm proposing that we transfer in from the liquor store. So, you know, the liquor store savings grows every, every month. You know, if you took, if you took, and we, if we didn't, if there was, if the savings amount, if savings account didn't grow, I want 240 for that bridge if I need it, and there's another $100,000 here, there's $340,000, we have $350 in savings now. But, you know, so I, I suggested 150 transferred in from the liquor store. Could that number go higher or lower than that? It could. That's one number to keep in mind. Okay, now I'm gonna talk a little bit about the special levy before we go down to the expense side. The special levy, what I try and project here, I can tell you guys, here's what our past projects are that we have to levy for. And I also put the end year, the year of the last payment of these. So you can see, in 2023, which is just the following year on, if we end up going on our own for this bond, then we have a $130,000 levy for the bond. Uh, in 2023, we also have about $52,000, that's the last year of that, of that debt service payment. So right away, in 2024, our special levy goes down by $52,000. Finally, we're getting something paid off. Anyway, then you can see, in '25, we lose $6,000 more, then '28, a little bit further out, it's at $25,000. So we've got, you know, five, six-year period here where we, where we potentially would have, or after five or six years, we'd be dropping down about $80,000 in levy that we don't need anymore. Um, I talked about the apartment building, part of the cap, the $200,000 cap on our abatement, you know, we gotta figure in the $36,000 for the apartment building. Then you see the, a couple other projects that we had. The one thing I would have to add in here is if there was any additional, uh, housing levy, because we did more housing projects and added more to it, but I do have the, I estimated $2,000 for 2020, um, 2022 for the abatement to the Miller property that we've already approved. And then this $64,000 that I have here is for the debt service on the pool. And, and so I'm a little bit high there because I know now that that number's a little bit lower, so I could knock that, 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 that levy down by a little bit. Actually, I think I did. Anyway, that includes the $64,000, let me see what the formula says here. Yeah, I did knock it down. That, that number actually is, is, is 52.5, so this number is actually the right number, I just have the wrong number in here. Which, which results in a 50, almost $60,000 increase over last year. Why, in the pros and cons, in the pros and cons, I listed one of them being having to add $60,000 to the levy, and that's where that number is. In 2023 and beyond, Ben, there's that number 60 in 2022, in '63, it goes to, the 60 kinda goes away, but the 60, we have to add 65 in for debt service on the levy, and the $130,000, which makes up the $195,000 that we would have to build into the, to the special levy in 2023. If you wanna know, I mean, percentages can make numbers look good, or percentages can make numbers look bad. This is 18.8% in the general levy increase. The difference between the 222 and the 282 is about, uh, 27% increase. So, I'm glad what Steve said. We've got a lot of projects, if we fund them all, that's a lot of levy increase because that's additional debt, additional tax levies that every business and home we fella around with, okay? As I go down through this stuff, as far as, um, you know, a lot of the numbers, I didn't change much, maybe tripled here or there. One of the things I'll, I'll mention, you guys approved the COLA and you approved the contract. This budget, like I said, is the max, um, the max budget for everything we've got going on. The one thing that's set is the COLAs and, uh, the wages and benefits for the employees that you just did. Those are also built into this. So you'll see some little increases in salaries, you know, wages and salaries and stuff in each one of these categories, and I just wanted to point out, them are in here, so you don't have to worry about that part of it. Let's worry about the big, big things. Okay? Um, it's gonna keep going down. Did you guys all have time to look at this? And the other, the other thing I wanna mention, oh yeah, this one. I didn't have this box open, but no, and I highlighted it. We are still, I had the increase from, you know, you'll notice this one here, 1,000 last year to 10,000 for employer relations. We have an ongoing issue going on, which we updated once before, regarding that ex-employee that's claiming disability, and so we have legal, legal expenses involving that. I don't know what they're gonna be, but I just estimated about that number in there. Hopefully, hopefully it's less than that. But, and hopefully it's resolved by the end of 2022, but I haven't really known that at this point, so... We get down to planning and zoning. Um, I do put in this budget some areas of some planning dollars, uh, and this is one of those areas I did have in there last year also, but this is putting some money in for engineering services, um, for development planning, nothing specific. So there, if we need Bob to do something, whether it's helping with the, the work that's being done, um, the Northwest, not that we'll tell him and approve it, yeah, go work on that stuff, we got the money for it, something like this that's not specific, anywhere in the budgets, will always come before the city council, before we approve the work being done, which we basically, I'm just pointing out that we do have some dollars there for some planning, development-type planning. In the general government's building category, uh, the only thing we looked at doing, we had $25,000 last year in capital for landscaping out there, and, um, they are working on that stuff, they are gonna be spending some more of that money this year, they haven't spent it all yet. We, we, we hope to get plantings in, you saw him pull all of them shrubs and stuff, all this stuff's going out of here too because it's just overgrown and older, we're gonna pull it all out, hopefully plant some, some better stuff in there by the end of the year. But in 2022, we need to do something with the sprinkler system. So you can see, we've got a $21,000 decrease rate, or $19,000 decrease rate there in, in the capital outlay for general government buildings, which is good. We're trying to reduce this as much as we can to offset, set some of the COLA increases that you guys approved. Public safety, which is the police department, um, that's one area where you see the biggest bump, I think, in, in employer contributions, FICA, that type of thing, um, because, uh, we've hired two new officers now, so we got the two full-timers who are fully staffed, and we let that one go, so it's kinda offset that a little bit, but we do have that other full-timer now. So with employer contributions, that's the health insurance part of it, and so with them, they're either, they got on our plans, one of them's family plan, one of them's single, so that drives up the medical insurance costs.
So, was it yes or no? Did you say that we're fully staffed with the police?
Did I say that? I don't know if we're fully staffed, we're fully staffed. One of the things that Jeff has to do, and, and really, it's, it's, obviously, with these two guys getting trained in still, hopefully before too long, they'll be on their own. Jeff is out there rolling around a lot, uh, also, you know, helping them out and stuff like that, mentoring them. He's got them guys working with the other full-timers on different shifts, one nights, one days. At some point, when these guys are on their own, we need to look at, or he needs to look at, do we need another full-timer? Because we talked about five full-timers and get Jeff totally off the streets once before. The driver of that, a lot of times, is how much are we getting from our part-timers that we've got to fill in the gaps? Right now, we're not getting any part-time hours. It's really, really large. And we either find part-timers that wanna work and give us hours that don't have full-time jobs and careers doing something else, or we look at possibly hiring a fifth one. And if we did hire a fifth one, we wouldn't need any part-timers. So, hopefully that answers your question. So in the police department, um, we did have a little bit of an increase in capital outlay. We need to, Jeff's on his last year, this year, of his, of his, lease on his car, and, you know, after three years, them cars, we're really getting mileys on them and starting to put money into them, which is the case this year. So we will plan to order another car later this year, with taking delivery of it in 2022, and then we would have the, the first of three years, um, lease payment on that. And I see I didn't update the, the comment here, but it would be, 2022 would be the first. No, I take that back. I think he's got one more year. So this, this year, yeah, so 2022 is the last year, and by the end of 2022, we'll be taking a, ordering up a new car, the 2023 budget would reflect the first year of that new car. So we'd order it in '22 and make the first payment in '23. But he also is looking for two radios, you know, 800 megahertz radios? They're, they're getting quite old, and he wants to start cycling some of them through. So he wants to order two of those, they're about four grand apiece roughly. And then, um, also, he needs a new computer battery. This year, we're actually gonna be looking to replace the one back there, which is in this year's budget, but next year, he needs to get his replaced. His is one of the older ones, um, you can't turn, you have to know how, have a special skill to turn that thing on when it goes, when it shuts down. Apparently, I'm only, only one that has that skill so far, but, yeah, tricky. So anyway, that's what he's looking for. In the highway, this is another area, professional services, I called it here, but I've got some money in here, about $10,000. We have to do the random testing for CDLs, that comes out of here due to the thousand bucks for random testing, drug, drug testing that we have to do. But we also, I have engineering planning for Third Street. We still haven't given up on the possibility of acquiring, uh, the end of Third Street behind West Central Turkeys and developing that road, so we have a north and a south actual decent roadway for people to come in and out in that residential area of the city. We've made a little bit of headway or movement with West Central Turkeys as far as talking to them, but, um, we're still not there yet. So I've got a little bit of engineering money in there to do that. And then, um, for capital outlay in the streets department, we've been funding, putting $15,000 a year in a capital equipment fund, and that's just something that if Brian had a major hiccup or something, um, he would use that money to, to pay for it. Again, it's something that's not, it's not a piece of equipment specific, so he would have to come to council to basically use that money to, to do whatever he needs to do. And then, in 2022, um, next year, we got the F-150 leased that, uh, he needs to replace the plow truck with another F-250, because that'd be the main plow truck. Uh, when he orders these new ones, um, he actually, he actually then takes the, the, the one he's got in service now becomes the main plow truck, and the one he's got, I mean, the one he's got now, the new one becomes the main plow truck, this one gets kinda handed down to the guy so they don't get rid of it. We kind of filter, filter them down that way. But anyway, so if anybody wants to talk to Brian about, um, the pickup and stuff like that, uh, it is time, based on a replacement schedule, to look at replacing just that one. Then he has future contribu-, uh, considerations that use road gauge, but I think the more he thinks about that, the more it's probably not gonna happen.
So, you have the 2022 F-250, I mean, do we have to lease from Ford, or does it have to be connected?
We get them off the state, the state bid, and they usually have, um, we can check and see if there's Dodges or Chevys out there, but typically, what we see is our, our, our local dealer that supplies too off the state bid is Nelson Ford, so that's kinda why we've been moving those, but...
We could shop around, or if it's just a thing that happens?
Yeah, well, he, he could, but the other piece of it is, um, I think that, uh, the one that he's taken out of service was a 2012, I believe, and the question would be, do the mounts and some of the things on that one fit? Because if the body styles haven't changed, it's possible that what we have, this one equipped, would be able to be switched over to the replacement, possibly. Hence another reason for going the same miles, as long as there isn't a body changed, a body style change that makes us buy new equipment, you know? And then, um, I didn't change the number in, in street maintenance as far as the total number, but dust guard has went through the roof. We used to spend $6,000 a year on dust guard for the gravel roads, and we went over budget last year, um, north of $8,000 to buy dust guard, and it, it doesn't look like it was a COBIT effect thing, we don't know. But, um, so what we did is I increased the dust guard up to about that $9,000 figure, but I stole money from his gravel fund, so he doesn't have as much money to spend in gravel. But I talked to Brian about all this, and he, he hasn't been spending, you know, we had, he kept thinking he needed more money for gravel, and he's not spending, um, you know, about that $3,000 or less. So it's easy for me to justify and tell, unless something changes in the gravel front that I can steal it from there. Nothing really to talk about. I did increase public, uh, utilities, that's basically our public utilities everywhere. That seemed to be tripling up our streetlights and everything a little bit, too, by having increased that. One thing I wanna talk about in the pool, you know, we budget, this is, this, we, we have money in the pool for 2022, $70,000, just like last year, and that's with the assumption that we wait for state funding and we open the pool next year. Because if the pool project was gonna happen this year, we wouldn't need this, but we don't know if it's gonna happen, and we won't know until the bids come out, and the bids don't come out till November, this has to be turned in by then. So, again, worst-case scenario. But one thing about this $70,000, one of the things that we know, I'll throw out there is, the plans and specs that are being done, there's donors that have, have stepped forward to do some of this demolition and hauling away of the debris. And after that was also started being, uh, taken into account and being looked at, it turns out that there's a, a utility lines that have to be moved, and this was discovered after they started drawing up the plans and specs. Also, and taken, part of the discussions, as I understood then, is when Aggies, as part of their donation, takes the old pool, uh, the, the pool facility all out of the ground, they were gonna fill in, bring in, fill... were going to fill in, bring in, fill, dump in the hole, because it has to be filled in, because they don't want people falling in it in the winter time. And then next year, basically, it would be dug out again, just because it has to be engineered, filled to support the new building. And one of the things that, when they were talking, and I'm getting a second hand, but when they were talking about Aggies about this, they were just thinking of in terms of filling in the hole. But in reality, when that new, when that old facility is taken out, it's not just the pool. It's also the, depending on how far down the footings and stuff go on the existing building, there may be more digging there that needs to be done. And definitely more fill to put in there. It doesn't make sense to fill all of that with just sand or gravel and then have to dig it all out again next spring. And so what we're thinking is, and I know Aggies have already got the, the specs on the soil boarding report and what the engineered fill specs would have to be. And Dan's going to, you know, kind of look at what that cost might be. But we, we're looking at it as, we don't want to have to put in fill and dig it back out. That's just moving it twice, digging it up, extra expense. So in talking to Dan, we thought, why don't we figure out what needs to go in there, put it in there this winter, and they won't have to dig it out again once it's all taken out? But there's going to be an additional spend. We can't ask Aggie to haul that away and donate all that. I mean, they're doing a lot already, but to put that much more on them, which seem like a little bit more ass than we should probably consider doing. Although, having said that, Dan's aware of that extra cost. We'll see what they come up with. But for this, I want to point this out, the $70,000, if for some reason we have the opportunity to go forward with the other funding source, or we move forward without the state, and there's going to be additional costs in moving that water line, regardless of what we do, and the additional fill, since this is already going to be in the budget, you know, I suggest that we just pay for those extra things if we need to, that aren't going to be in the plans and specs, and we'll use whatever we need to out of this budget money to cover it. It'll be way more than, more than what we need. But it's already going to be in the budget, so it'll, so, you know, we'll have, we'll be able to use it. If we don't go forward, the pool opens next year, we use it as operating funds. The parks. For the 2022 capital outlay, City Trailhead Development was a request for 10 grand. Brian needs a little re-whack to think we replace them every couple of years. That's not much money. He was actually going to go to, was thinking about going to battery powered ones, which would have been more money, but he decided because of the budget already, just keep it at the regular. He buys two of them and he gets them for, you know, 500 bucks or less. There'll be gas. He does need a new John Deere mower. And he's got a 1570 now. He uses, one of the mowers he uses out at the airport. And then he also uses, then he uses the other one in town. And the one at the airport is not just the airport. But what he wants to do is he wants to take the oldest, smallest one, he wants to replace the 1570 with a new one because of the hours on that one. And then the smaller, oldest one, he'll end up selling or getting rid of. If I understand the way he wants to rotate these through. Also, Peterson Park needs new shingles, new roofing on that, he figured 7,500 bucks. And then every year they're going to start putting park sign out, somewhat of a, some nice park sign on a different park. We got 850 bucks in there. You'll see overall, the park's budget went from 56,000 in capital outlay down to 51,000. So we have dropped quite a bit to try and still get some things done. He does list future considerations. He's still hoping for a wood chipper attachment for the Bobcat, landscaping rack for the Bobcat, and a brush more for the Bobcat. But, you know, whether that comes out of the third fund that they're approved, or, you know, if he can justify somehow coming and ask for that 15,000 capital outlay money or equipment fund money to pay for it, you know, we'll see what happens. He did talk about, and there's still might, he still might come to the council and talk to the council about this outside budget, just extra stuff later, about getting on a rotation, lease purchase rotation purpose for the loader and the Bobcat. So we'd always, after, you know, three years or whatever the rotation would be, he would just trade it in, give them, much like, much like leasing an automobile. He's looking into some more information. I don't see how that is a more cost effective way of doing it, because you have that constant lease payment of, you know, whatever it is, $20,000 a year. Well, the loader now that we have has been, you know, I don't know what, seven years old, whatever. So there has been years, if we did a repetitive lease, we'd always have, regardless of, you know, repairs, we'd have 20 grand we have to put in this lease program, where we have two, three, four years now, we're not putting that kind of money into the loader. And we've had to put tires on and stuff, but not to the tune of, of, you know, 20 grand worth of maintenance a year. So he's looking at some information, and at some point we may come and talk to the council about it, but that's probably going to be 2023 budgets. We'll see. I don't know why this one's highlighted, but seasonal decorations, we budget the same number there. Okay, Historic City Hall, that's the stuff down at Historic City Hall, that's manned by Otterton County. We pay the utilities, that type of thing, that's what that, there's no increase in that. The one thing I'll mention about this though, it would fall under communications and maybe capital outlay, we are in the process of, of, of looking into upping the internet there because they keep dropping out when they're doing Zoom calls, when they're uploading. And we are at 50 down, 50 meg down, 10 meg up, should be plenty. But we do know, we had that modem down there, or that router, I had it set up so that there was a public side of it and a private side of it. And because when they're using it, regardless of who's using it, if somebody out in the public next door is using it and they're uploading, maybe it's a clinic, I don't know, a bank uploading big files and they're using our wifi to do it, it knocks us out. We don't know what's doing it, but we knew from Lakes Country, or from Arbig's records, when they looked at it for me when I was asking the questions, there are certain times when there's a major upload going. So somebody's logging into our wifi and using the guest wifi, and they're uploading big files. And when that happens, that might be when ours is basically having problems, because they're, they're tapping out at that 10 meg upload scoop. And when it does that, you have no capacity to do no downloading or nothing. The goofy thing is, is this only happens, well, I remember when I, when he told me what times it was, it was more around that four or later, but we're not even opening it. So I don't know. But I know when, we are manning it down there, and they're trying to do the things that Lakes Country Service Co-op is doing with, you know, they're uploading big files too because of the media stuff that they do, and they're doing out of our facility down there as they man it for us, they keep dropping out. And so what I did is I went down there and I closed and shut off the guest side. So if anybody makes any comments, why isn't the Historic City Hall wifi, public wifi working anymore? Because I shut it off, to see what effect it has on the other side of it that they need down there. In the, in the, then the other aspect of this is, we have had communications with Otterton County, Lakes Country, Otterton Lakes Company Association, to see if there's some blended funds to help us get fiber into that building. And from my understanding is, that building's wiring and everything is the old copper stuff. It's not capable of doing fiber without doing some major upgrades to the wiring coming into the building. There's Arbig costs to do that, so we're looking to see if there's some blended funds to help cover that, so we can actually maybe go to a monthly, beef it up to 100 meg and, you know, 120 or something like that, or actually go higher than that. But, so I'm looking at things down there. It's just an FYI, if somebody says, why isn't the wifi working anymore? Okay, this is the community center part. This is the number that's, one of the numbers that's really affecting this, 18.8%. So what I figured in here is, there are some utilities that we know of already based on the history of the building down there that we're going to have to pay because it's our building now. So there's your phone lines and utility costs and, you know, something in there for repairs if we need to do something, some office supplies, that type of thing. But this is capital outlay, there's nothing there, but the total budget that I have is 26,000. That includes 20,000, $40 to, as an architect fee, to try and start working on some plans for us to upgrade that building to make it ADA compliant. Will 20 cover it? I don't know. We'll wait and see. But the other $40 is food license fee. One of the things that I learned from talking to NSI down there who does the food services now, our kitchen has to be licensed to prepare food. That's 40 bucks a year. And the food, the senior center always, you know, paid that because they're providing the kitchen. So our kitchen needs a license for them to cook and provide senior meals down there. And they still do that. The seniors just can't eat in-house because it's not ADA compliant. So we still, we'll pay for that 40 dollar a year license, and that's under professional services. So one of the things that I know from talking to Emily Reno, is that she reached out to, deed?
USDA?
Yeah, USDA. The USDA, they have a technical services division that helps, for, I believe, no cost, will come in and take a look at the building and kind of give you an idea of what needs to happen. And, and, and she had reached out to us one time. As a matter of fact, she, she put in a grant, it was, it was an application that had to be filed, and she put that in and didn't even mention anything to the city. And I haven't heard the status of that, but that was asking for some technical assistance to come and take a look at the building, with the hopes that they would be able to give us somewhat of an idea of what that building has to have, and we can take that document, you know, charge, and give it to an architect, because they won't, they can't use, they can't use their documents for architectural services. They give it to them to kind of get the ball rolling.
So if we get that document, why, why, I mean, why does the architect have to be in English?
Because that document that they're going to provide us does not cover, it's not a biddable plans and specs, does it cover all the code things? That document doesn't do that. It gives you a higher level assessment of the building and the potential needs to make it ADA compliant. But an architect is going to be needed to put together the plans and specs for the project, which we're going to have to bid it out because of the state requirements.
Want to check the grant, please.
The USDA, yeah. And the USDA docket, the USDA thing actually says, this cannot be used as an official architect generated plans and specs, biddable document. Right, but, I mean, I guess in my head, I'm thinking, when we took that, when I, when I started the idea of, let's, you know, let's try to get the building, I knew, before going into that process, that every door in that building was going to have to be widened to make it ADA compliant. So why can't we just?
Get a list of ADA requirements?
Hire, hire a construction guy to go through and widen all the doors to ADA compliance? It's more than that though, Kevin, because them bathrooms, you can't widen them bathroom hallways to make them ADA compliant. The bathrooms are so uncompliant, you have to add an addition to that building to make ADA bathrooms. Seriously. But this is, this is something, this is something that that technical document from USDA should provide us. And then we can have that conversation, is, is it so much that we have to go beyond the contractor to a, to a architect? But I can tell you, if, if, if a contractor looked at it and said, well, it's going to cost, I know it's going to cost $200,000, then we need biddable document because it went over the threshold. Because the threshold for having to bid is, I think, 175.
But if that ups our cost, can't fold. You got to pay everybody to come in here and tell us what we can't do. Right?
Right, but, but it's also, it's also HVAC is old and needs to be replaced. And actually, when, and this is just Sid walking through with me, but when Sid walked through it and looked at how they had the venting for the furnace and the return air and everything else, and the stuff on top of the roof, he said, why did they do it this way? And, and he said, this is, this is going to be allowed now. So it's, it's more than entryways, it's HVAC, how it's bent, how it's vented, how it's, the air circulated, it's roof, it's, it's, it's a big project. So when you're talking HVAC doors, entryways, roof, and everything else, you're going to hit 175,000 pretty quick.
So have we talked about turning it down? And was, where do you have to move? For a more versatile building? That's crazy.
I did, I did ask him about that, you know, well, wouldn't it be better for us if it's half a million bucks? How about knock it down and start over? And he goes, well, you can do that, you can look at doing that. And he said, this is an awful solid building though. The bones of this thing, it's a block building, it's, it's going to last forever. It's just getting it updated.
It's solid too.
Yeah, I know, I know. But that's, so, so my point here is that this is, I have something in here, if we need an architect, you know, if we want to go that route in 2022. But we'll, we'll know more about what we think we might want to look at doing, when we get, when I figure out what's going on with USDA and that technical service. But the other thing is, this is something that the community wants to see happen today. I mean, they're not, we get calls constantly, when are you going to, when are you going to do something with that building so we can use it? Well, we can't do anything with it until we know what's wrong with it.
That's true, I'll use that to be testing.
Yeah.
Do I call real double boxes with architect and other than just want to ram my head in the way?
You're not the only one. You are not the only one.
This scenario of senior center, it's, it's not much different than the walking bridge over the, the rock.
Okay, so, so that's just the number, you know? You can take this number out of here and I'll show you how this works. Wow, that just dropped it down to 15% right there. And if I took out more, it would drop it even more. So, and you go down to, this is the economic development position. I figured 70,000 in wages, then you've got your, you know, benefits, you know, employee taxes, benefits, health insurance. I don't know if they're going to have a family or not, so I had to figure the total health insurance that the city would kick in if they needed all of that. You know, the bottom line is then we would need a debt, an office form someplace, we'd need telephone, there'd be office supplies. Capital, I figured we need a computer, cellphone, because they'd have to have cellphone service with the type of work they're going to be doing, much like what I've got. We need to get them a desk phone, there's going to be labor to wire all that stuff, wherever it's going to be. We need a desk, we need a chair, miscellaneous. So I thought, I figured about five grand worth of capital upgrade stuff to get them situated in an office. So I figured 105,700 bucks. Is that going to get us an economic development director? I have no idea. It might get us one first year. I, when I think of economic development position, and I think of having one in the city of Pelican Rapids, it would be great to have one that already knows the networks, the system, not somebody out of school that graduated from college with a community planning degree. Because if they haven't worked in the field, it's going to take them longer, that learning curve is going to be longer, and the effect of spending 105 or 120,000 a year for an economic development director, before you start seeing the fruits of that, could be five, six, seven years out, maybe less. If we can find one that is, has experience in doing this, so they know the programs that USDA has, and they know the deed programs, and they know all the grant opportunities because they've been a part of it, then the effectiveness of, of their role, you'd see it, the, the, the shorter learning curve, the effects of it with development and, and stuff, grants being written in the community that would help kind of, you know, you know, possibly buy down levees, find grants for incentives, that type of thing. You'd see the effects of it a lot quicker, which you could justify then, and it would potentially pay for itself, as Steve talked about. The, the growth in, in, in the community growing would pay for itself through the tax base increase for the 500, the 105,000 a year. So who you get would really drive how soon you're going to get a return on that investment. I don't know if 100,000 is enough, 105,000 is enough. We won't know until we put it out there. So, but again, like we talked about, you knock this one out of the budget, you're down to 4%.
I believe we're on the same page, saying that, you know, we would like to have a economic development director, but is this the year to do it with all the other projects?
The other thing is this budget doesn't have anything on 2024. And we know the city is going to have a major cost come 2024. Either whether we, even if, even if MINDOT, through the, you know, the group that was here tonight and MINDOT comes up with, if they're willing to look at some of this stuff. Because that group obviously is just focusing on the downtown. Great, that's wonderful. But a lot of the costs the city has is beyond the downtown area, north, south, east, west, where the new sidewalks or multi-use paths on the column are going in. So that's where a lot of our cost is driven. Yeah, we have some downtown costs too, but most of them downtown costs on this project are MINDOTS because it's all in the right of way. You know, they're talking about just putting grass in in that one area where if we want wide sidewalks, we want to put concrete in, that would follow up. So, so anyway, for whatever that's worth, there's still discussion to be had there. But when we look at the economic development stuff, this yellow is the thirty grand that we put in every year. And, you know, if something pops up, the city can, you know, use that money for, that's what we take it out of. If it doesn't get spent at the end of the year, I take and I push it to Danielle and she throws whatever we don't spend into a savings account because we budget it, we put it in the budget, we want to put it aside, help it grow a little bit so we maybe have some funds to do a little, you know, some little things with. So I can't tell you. You guys have, the other information that was shared with you guys in the packet was, it showed the 2021 budget and where we're at year-to-date. You can look and see how much of that's been spent this year already. I don't think it's any. But it also had the budgeted actuals for 2020 and for nineteen. You've got all that in the packet. I'm not going to talk about that stuff. You can just look at it as you're looking at all of it to see what we spent the last couple of years on these things. The burning trail, eight thousand dollars. You can see that was eighteen thousand, dropped to eight thousand. That's because, here's the list that that's made up from. The one thing that dropped off was the ten thousand bucks that we spent for five years on the lights for the baseball field. That's done and gone, so I could knock that ten grand off. So that really dropped that one down. So this year it's just West Central Initiative funding, it's the burning trail. The council gives fifteen hundred for advertising through the chamber and then the three thousand for the Arter County Lakes Country Association magazine, that thing that we kicked out, that we're a part of. And then this economic development or consulting thirty thousand that I have in here is just kind of a placeholder again, two more planning dollars. But this one was more geared towards the use of Apex Engineering for the 2024 Street project. And then a little bit if we needed to for the planning of the northwest farmland to develop that. The planning commission right now is going through that plating process. But we didn't need to use any of that for that necessarily because West Central Initiative provided us that consultant through a grant money that they got, grant opportunity that they got. So we've got some technical assistance to put that plat together. But the main part of this was just to be used for Apex work in the 2024 project. Then the other expenses didn't change. Then we get down to this one. You'll notice that when we talk about the library at this point, we didn't put any increase in 2022 in the library. It shows the same number. The only thing I'll comment on that at this point is we provided in the packet the last prior years for the library. The one thing that I will mention is in the packet of information that I put in there, I believe there was a piece in there in the packet that showed the library's 2021 year-to-date and their budgeted numbers and then their twenty amounts and the nineteen amounts of actual, you know, the budgeted and the actual amounts. So you can, you know, you can look at it to see where the over budget, where the under budget. One of the things that I had put in that is up above, on the top of the revenue expenditures row, I actually inserted numbers in there and it just shows the actual wages plus benefits. So for instance, in 2019, if you looked at that, you'd see a hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and twelve. And that is adding wages, employer contribution, FICA, health insurance. It's those categories added together to show you how much the actuals were for wages and benefits for employees. And then you can weigh that for whatever it's worth. You know, as an example, in 2022, if they spent a hundred and eighty-two thousand, we gave them a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. You know, they had six thousand additional from the city. But now, having said that, the money we give them isn't just to cover wages and benefits. We wanted to cover wages and benefits because there are employees. But it's not just nursery for wages and benefits. So they had, you know, six thousand dollars above the one eighty-eight. In 2020, the actuals were a hundred and seventy-four thousand. We gave them a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So you had fourteen thousand additional at that point. In 2021, because we're not done yet, I projected, and you'll see that number, I projected they're going to come in about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. But I want to make a note to that because when they started the year, they were short their full-time employees. In 2020, they pretty much had their full-time employee till the last month, basically. But in 2021, they started with short their full-time employees. They hired that full-time employee in February. And so if I was to go back and take that into account, the projection is probably going to hit that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar area, maybe a little bit less. But even if it's safe, it is, when it comes in at a hundred and seventy-five, we gave them a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. My point in all this is we are giving them more than they need to cover wages and benefits. And what we've been always led to believe, in my opinion, we've always been led to believe the library's always been open and staff during COVID. So, for whatever that's worth. But and the hours haven't changed from what we've been told. So I don't know where to go with this number. The budget committee, you know, looking at this information and talking about it, one of the things that, you know, you take into account is we just gave everybody a three and a half percent wage increase or three and a quarter percent wage increase for 2022. I hope the library board does the same thing down there. And I'll say it like I've said it to the council before. I don't believe, and we're going to know this, and I got something to say about that coming, our thing in the budget coming up, agenda coming up. I don't believe, in my opinion, and I hope I'm not proven wrong. In my opinion, the city council gives the library X number of dollars. I don't think, and they're city employees. I don't think the city, the library board can circumvent the wage, the COLAs given to city employees. I don't believe that they can change that. We're going to find out. But I don't think they can. They get a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. They get to choose how it's spent. But I don't think they can do it inside the parameter of changing what the city council gives city employees. And if you go back and look at when we gave a four percent a couple of years ago, they only got two percent because of library board's position on that or action on that. We gave three percent in 2020, they gave zero percent. Now, in, I think I got them right, but they're shorted it anyway. I said back then, there's no reason to not give them the same COLA because their budget can handle it. And if you look at what the projections are and where they came in, the actuals are, there was no reason, like I said, when I was looking at the budget, there was no reason to hold back them COLAs on the employees down there because they have gotten enough money, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and they only spent a hundred and seventy-four. So they had the money. And if you looked at what they didn't give them and you calculated how much they would have made, they still would have stayed under, well under the hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And I get it, it's not just necessarily for wages and benefits. But they've been given enough money to cover the COLA or the wage increases for the staff down there. And I think they should have been given the cost of living adjustments. And I think they should be this time because they're giving enough money to cover without increasing the one eighty-eight. But I'm sure rightfully so, they're going to want to say, well, if you're going to give them, if you want us to give them three and a quarter percent raise, give us the money to do that. By increasing the budget. And I'll argue, without some discussions and some further direction and information from the state Bureau of Mediation Services, we'll see where that lands. But I don't know if they had the authority to do what they did down there. So I don't know where to go with this number other than based on what I see in the actuals and stuff, we're giving them way more than they need for wages. How much do you want to give them for other things outside of wages and benefits? That's the big question. It was one of the points that I wanted to make to that. Lost my train of thought. Oh, I know what it was. Y'all got a letter back in June from the library board, signed by the library director. And just as we were pressured, I believe what they were asking for is to give the library enough money to cover, an increase to cover the two percent they didn't give the employees when we gave four percent, plus the three percent that they, that we gave that they gave zero percent, so that's five percent, plus any potential increase that we give in COLA this year, so three point two five. So if I understand what the library board, and maybe Kurt, you could help us understand it, but if I understand what the letter is saying is they want an eight point two five percent increase over that one eighty-eight number, I think is what the board is requesting. Am I right?
Am I right?
That puts this, if you did that, that puts this number well over two hundred thousand dollars. Two hun, well, fuck, two hundred and two. If I do the math, and I'm not going to do the math, but I think if I, if I calculated it outright, I wasn't, I can't remember if I used eight, eight and a quarter, if I used seven percent, but it's going up to over two hundred, two thousand dollars. To cover past increases and the increase that you just approved in 2022. And again, I'll go back and state, it, to me, it's more about the council deciding or thinking about, how much more do we want to cover as a student, the library above wages and benefits? Maybe that's a discussion we got to have. I would throw a thought out here, and I know I suggested this once before and it didn't go anywhere. My thinking is, and something to think about is, leave this number where it is. See where the projections come in or where 2021 ends for the library wages and benefits. And then having, knowing what past years are. And then let's sit down with the library board and have a discussion about how much above wages and benefits the city might want to be considered covering and the rest of it's got to come from other sources. Because I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate to raise the one eighty-eight above three twenty-five or above, you know, two hundred thousand dollars or by eight and a quarter percent, just because they want the one eighty-eight to go up by that much. I think it makes more sense to figure out what do you need and what the city thinks we should do in funding wages and benefits plus. That's just my thought. But anyway, with that information, I don't know if Kurt has any other comments, be on the board or whatever, but that's just what I have to say on that. That number.
What's the bottom number we're required to contribute?
The bottom number is about a hundred and forty thousand is what the city is required by the state to give to the library. And obviously, you know that if they're city employees, which I say they are, we should cover wages and benefits. Well, wages and benefits is a hundred and seventy-five thousand projected.
It's actually a hundred and seventeen thousand.
Is what we have to give? I think a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventeen. But I think I got the hundred and forty-four number because at one point we stopped giving at a hundred and forty-four or above that number for quite a while before it really jumped up. So I was thinking one forty-four. But the state sent us out, sent us out a letter did telling you this is the bare minimum, and that was a hundred and seventeen. But again, there's no way you can keep that library staff and the dollars open for that. In fact, the hundred and seventy-five would suggest that with the hours and the staffing that they have, with the two full-timers and the part-timers that they have and the way they use them, the hundred and seventy-five would be the bare minimum that they would need. But again, that's based on 2020 and the projection for 2021, maybe it's higher. And I know in the, in that number, you know, there is a couple of grand that goes into paying overtime wages down there each of the last two years. Anyway, that's just for information sake and thought anyway. But we didn't do anything, the budget committee didn't do anything with this number because we wanted to just kind of, let's think about it. And I think our only recommendation would be, or suggestion would be, let's see where it lands at the end of 2021 and then sit down and have a discussion about what we need to increase it. And if I'm wrong and the projection comes in at a, you know, a hundred and ninety thousand, well then, obviously they maybe need a little bit more money. But I wasn't wrong in 2020. And then the airport is the only other thing. Airport really isn't an issue because we didn't really don't put a whole lot into it besides just the maintenance side of things and capital. And we don't plan anything in budget numbers. You know, we do talk about, we'd like to replace the gas pump. That was a 2021 thing. Brian's still looking into that thing, but we haven't done it yet. Because that involves upping the internet, it involves a machine that basically runs credit cards. Now we've got credit card fees, that type of thing. So there's more research that needs to be done on that. Also, we need to upgrade that facility at some point. And, but we have money in airport funds. So if we do these projects, it's not going to do anything to the budget because we've got the money to pay for it. It's just a matter of, I'll put Steve and Steve on the squad. Councilman Stan, Councilman Foster and Brian also and myself doing enough homework to basically come to the council and say, we're going to do this, this is what it's going to cost, we'll see if we're going to do it. And I know they're looking at the gas pump. That's a serious thing that we'd like to do, but it's going to up the operating cost of the airport.
I mean, I'm not a pilot or anything, but what are the facilities like out there? Are they compliant restrooms and things like that?
Yeah, but, but they're really outdated. And we talked about, because the restrooms aren't used that often, we talked about, it needs new fixtures and stuff like that. They're old and crusty. We talked about just combining into one unisex bathroom, putting new stuff in there, putting new flooring in there, painting it, making it look a little bit fresher.
It's getting, in my opinion, it's getting so much more used in town. The airport, these flying, it's being so popular and the A-5 are flying, so I think it's going to be used more and more.
Did I hear someplace they were talking about helicopters?
Well, in our, in our master plan.
That was in the master plan.
Yeah. Master plan's got lots of things in there that, you know, would show up. It's all kind of a twenty-year plan.
I doubt the bathrooms are ADA compliant. As far as the other facilities, I mean, I'm flying to a lot of airports. This is Pelican as well. Some of them are pretty fancy, some of them are pretty crude.
Well, I say ADA compliant, I think the doorways are wide enough. They don't have the handrails and that type of thing for someone to help pull themselves out of their wheelchair onto the toilet. But there's open space that they can park next to it and they could do it. Is it officially any, I would think that it, outside of the handrail, it would have to be any. But I'll tell you what, years ago, we had this planned out. We were going, because it's not a huge ticket, a cost ticket item, but we had it planned out. Brian was going to be the general, the city was going to be the general. Brian was gonna be the general, the city was gonna be the general on it. We were gonna, you know, work with flooring people and plumbers and everybody and get this done. We can't, we couldn't, we had to get quotes because the state's gonna pay, help pay for this. And we had it on our CIP. And all the state said was, get two quotes from people. And even if you can't get two, because it's a small thing, get one, just so we have some number. We couldn't get anybody.
Too small a price.
Too small a price. So that's what's. Yeah, and I'm sure it would be. But that's the difficulty we're having in getting this done, because we had planned to get this done five, six years ago. We just can't find people that want that small a job.
Okay, Don, any closing comments?
No. There's the budget.
That's right.
So, my closing comments would be, take all the information in the packet because there's a lot more budget information there. And we need to talk at the next council meeting, have more discussion on this. If you guys have any questions about the stuff in the pack, outside of a council meeting, you wanna sit down and meet with me and talk about some things, whatever, the numbers, whatever the case may be, or have some ideas on, hey, can we do this? Call and let me know, I'll write it down so it can be, make sure we discuss it as a group next time. But feel free to stop in, or call ahead of time, just make sure I'm here and not on the phone busy. But I'd be more than happy to be in the business with anyone of you guys to go over this stuff.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item number 10, Bureau of Mediation Service meeting.
Did you do that an hour? That, well, then you went to handle the information you got now. But, so, the Bureau of Mediation Services got ahold of me. We have a meeting set for October 1st at 10 o'clock in the morning. We are going to post that this meeting will be attended by a forum of the council. This is another one that I encourage the council to come and be a part of. She's requesting information from me now, and I know she sent the same request to Wayne Runnegan. And he provided her with a bunch of stuff, I just gotta go through and see what Wayne provided. I think it was a lot of the information that he had already provided to meetings here. The other, the meeting is here, yes, sorry. And so she's got stuff, city charters, stuff like that, bylaw, all kinds of stuff like that that she wants from us. And so, I'll be sending that to her, she wants it as soon as possible, she has time to look at it, but. 10 o'clock is when it starts, I cannot tell you if it will be a hour meeting or if it'll be a, till 6 o'clock at night meeting.
Very long.
I have no idea. I know she's got, she's got, she's got an agenda, and I'll be looking at that, not an agenda, but she had some comments about the purpose of this meeting and what she hopes to accomplish. One of the things that I got out of what her email said was, when she leaves here, it's not the final. That's just to come and get an idea of what the two arguments are, and then we're gonna be setting a hearing date. And that hearing date, there will be, the way they do this is, you know, she's gonna wanna know who's gonna testify for the city, and what information are they gonna be talking about? Who's gonna testify for the library, you know, kind of a formal thing? If that's what she's thinking is needed here, but, so, I don't know how long it's gonna take on October 1st, but the outcome of that is to get an idea of who's gonna represent the city and the library and set a hearing date. And out of that hearing, she will make a decision.
On this October 1st one, is that the city as well as the library together in a room now?
That's my understanding.
So she doesn't intend to meet with the city and the library individually at all?
I don't, I don't, no, I don't take it that way. I think that she wants to meet with both sides. Because I think, you know, there was some, she alluded to some, something in there about, maybe we can come to a resolution at that thing, otherwise, a hearing type thing.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say up until this point, she never has asked for any information from us. So she doesn't even know what the argument's about, or arguing, the discussion is about, the issue is. So.
Okay, Don, do you wanna turn the mic over to Dan Allen, and talk about the Red River Valley home improvement?
Uh, no, I get it. No, I just included a little flyer in the packet for you guys to look at and think about the, we've done it, what, four, five years now? Last thing, cancel because of COVID, and it's getting to be the time of year where there isn't, or the early bird pricing is through this week, after that it goes up to $800. After that, it goes up to $930. So I just wanted to know if we're interested in doing it again?
What's the question?
800.
800?
Yeah.
That's what it was, the last one.
Yes.
Do we have a group that's willing to do that in Miami again? You got that.
Why don't just walk out the door?
That's why he ran out.
I mean, no, not really. I guess, I feel that council has to decide if they're willing to pay for it, then.
So if we choose that, we are willing to, do we have a caveat down there saying, provide it if there's a word for it?
Is it revendable?
Not, not what you're paying.
No, I think, I think they keep, there's two different dates. And so I think that if you cancel now, they keep $100 and you'll get it back. But then I think the closer it gets. Yeah, yeah. And I think last year we did, or not last year, we didn't do it, maybe this year before, or the plan was, we didn't bring up the stuff because it wasn't gonna be manned all the time. So people signed up for when they could be there, and people were there, and people.
One of the persons that was really instrumental was Deana Johnson. Of course, she worked at Historic City Hall, she won't work, so I don't know what her status is, if she helped with this or not.
Yeah, she says, um.
Saying that was really easy, isn't it?
Good luck. Find your luck. Good luck finding those.
So what is the council's wish, and do you wanna proceed with this, or?
I know it's a well-attended show, and I think when they did have the booth there, they got a lot of feedback.
Yeah, Steve and I.
But I'm gonna be honest, I'm very interested. Even though I'm in that building, I'm most worried about not working, so. So I, you know, I don't care what you guys choose, I'm with either way.
Steve, do you have any comments on that? You gonna work?
No, I'm not gonna work today. I got so much going on, I got, but.
You're ordering a diner dinner, aren't you?
Yeah, no. I mean, it's a good thing, but whether we get anything out of it, I don't know.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Well, it's a good track, too.
And it is a lot of work, I believe, and the people that I've talked to down there.
The guy that did the majority of the work, I'd say just walked out the door.
Yeah. You know, you get the comments from people, you know, 30 years ago, I was in Pelican Rapids, such a nice community, dah 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 dah, haven't been back there since, so.
So if we approve it now, we're out basically 100 bucks if we.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, if, yeah, I think the December, we can cancel up until December, so.
And we could possibly talk to the board committee, maybe they wanna go there. Have another opportunity for funding, you know, that'd be part of the.
What's the deadline, Dan?
For the 800, to get the early bird, it's this week.
I'd say at risk of losing $100, that's not a big deal. We should probably do that. And if, then that would give us a chance to speak with, if we have a part board that.
Is she ready to make up motions?
Sure.
What is it?
Pay the, let them think we're coming until we don't know we ain't there.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by just saying aye. What was the same?
That was strong. Don't worry, you won't be asked.
Hey, you were, you were.
Put him on the do not contact. Okay, item number 12, Resolution Number 2021-14, calling for public hearing and annexation of certain property located Pelican Township to the city of Pelican Rapids, Minnesota. And that was included in your packet, Don.
Yep, upon the screen. Otterton County has now purchased this land, it's just west of our industrial park here, Councilman Strand's building, directly west of him. It was the old Thompson property, they've acquired all 11 acres. They wanna put up the new county garage and get it out of the residential area over here. They want water and sewer extended to that property for their building. And in order to get water and sewer from the city, it needs to be annexed in. That's just kinda the position the city taken with.
Where does water?
Water and sewer basically comes down Industrial Park Road right here. So we'll basically work with Bob at Apex to kinda put it through the ditchway or whatever and get it over to this property. Bob's been working with the engineer with, they hired him as the engineer to engineer the project for him, too. So, part of this process of annexing it in then is for them to send a petition to the city. In your packet was the copy of the signed petition, I believe, and also in your packet was a resolution. If the city approves this, and after you approve this tonight, or if you do, there's a whole process. I've got, I met with the city attorney, but I had mapped out from tonight's meeting all the way through the end of November, the process we have to go through to get this officially annexed in and rezoned for them to do what they're gonna do. It starts by action tonight. If you approve it, what I need is, I need two motions, and maybe two, could be one maybe, but the first motion would be to accept the petition as legitimate, as legitimate or whatever, from the county. And then the second motion would be to approve Resolution 2021-14, which is a resolution calling for the public hearing, which will then happen tentatively on October 12.
Do we have anything in? I wasn't talking early on when I think Wayne was here discussing these county drives, you weren't sure of the location, that they wanted to be on a asphalt roadway. Are they gonna be annexed in and have acquired the city to pave, you know, that portion of it? Is that 450th, I believe?
450th or 490th.
I think it's 450th.
290th.
Do we own a half of that, or not?
We own, we do, but we only own basically, you know, it's kinda weird because the first part, this part is not in the city. So we don't own that half. But this part, you know, we're kinda responsible for half of it. But my understanding was, and it's not, they never, they've never said anything to the city about having to share in the cost of paving that. So, but also this property, in all the places they've looked at, this was always their number one choice. It's just that it got kinda thrown off the table for a while, when Adele Thompson was alive, because she wouldn't, she had so many concerns about other people also wanting it, she had a hard time just deciding what to do with it. So when she passed away, her family then somehow, I don't know how, got into discussions with the county again, and ultimately they sold it to the county.
What was the first motion?
That we accept, that we accept the petition as legitimate.
Second, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. What was the same, motion, Kerry? Next motion, Don, you wanna read that?
Yeah, the next motion is just to approve Resolution 2021-14, calling for a public hearing on the annexation.
How will we approve Resolution 2021-14, calling for public hearing on the annexation of that property?
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. What was the same, motion, Kerry? Thank you. Item number 13, liquor store personnel.
Yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of Maggie at the liquor store. We have a part-time employee down there that's decided to go, they come and go, but they decided to go. So we have, this is FYI, we have posted for, positioned for a part-time liquor store clerk. Once we have that process, we're hoping, definitely, the next meeting, we should be bringing a recommendation before the council hires a part-time accountant for Maggie.
That was just an FYI?
Yeah, just FYI, you'll.
Any questions?
We're not adding numbers or nothing, we're just replacing.
Any questions?
I'm just curious why, like, where Chief lives, what is that?
The name?
The homes.
Did you say block of homes, why is it circled in red?
I took this right off the county website, I have no idea. It might be because they're just identifying Raishay subdivision, that's what it's called.
Okay, that's all you had on that, right?
All I got.
Okay, let's go to item number 14, approval of minutes, first is a part board minutes, which are in your packet. Is there a motion to approve? One of those is the second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. What was the same, motion, Kerry? The next one, we'll accept the planning commission minutes, and then we're, Danielle wants to talk about the new employee. So need a motion to approve the planning commission minutes of May 3rd, 2021. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by just saying aye. What was the same, motion, Kerry? Okay, Danielle, approve new planning commission member, do you wanna explain why we're approving a new one?
Yes, so one of the planning commission members resigned, Dan Husted had to resign. He just wasn't able to give the time that he felt that the position was needed now. And so, so we were down, we're down a member now. And we did put on the website and on Facebook, you know, letting people know that we are looking for a new member. And we received an application from Rudy Martinez. And so I would ask council to approve Rudy Martinez as a, to fill Husted's position.
I move to approve Rudy Martinez's position on the planning commission.
For a second? Motion second, discussion. Danielle, did you say how long the term is?
No, I didn't.
How long he'll be finishing, Danielle?
He'll be finishing Dan, I think Dan has, I looked it up a while back, but I think, I think his end is the end of 2022, so, so he'll have the rest of this year and next year, and then if he chooses, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. What was the same, motion, Kerry? Item number 15, City Hall hours discussion, Danielle, I think you were gonna speak to that, too?
I was, no.
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, I will. So we tried over the hours going from 7:30 to 5:30, and then Fridays from 7:30 to 11:30. It worked really well for staff. It, I, it works well for people that want to come before 8 o'clock or after 5:00. So I am asking you to consider just permanently changing City Hall hours to 7:30 to 5:30, Monday through Thursday, and then 7:30 to 11:30 on Fridays.
Year round?
Year round.
If we have issues or something comes up, which we haven't had at all, I don't know if you guys have heard anything, but we can always change back, but it is really working well. I've seen people coming up here, I did hear, you know, 7:30, there's people coming in. Not a lot, but there are people that stop in on their way to work, and the same thing. After 5 o'clock, we see people coming.
Does this apply to the street department also?
The street department just has their summer hours and their winter hours, so they'll, in the wintertime, they'll go back to their normal. It's just City Hall, open hours.
Five would set the recommendation, Danielle, and change or maintain the summer hours? We have a motion and a second, discussion, discussion.
We've got no feedback at all from.
Have any gentlemen had any? Nobody's touching it for me.
You know, and I, I mean, I've had the occasional person say, oh, I stopped in on Friday, but then I saw your clothes and they came in on Monday, but they, you know, they didn't express being upset about it or anything. I really, I mean, I, I thought we'd get at least a couple of people that were mad about it, but I've gotten absolutely no feedback.
Do you have the drop box? Does that get emptied during the, on Friday afternoon then, or how often does that get emptied?
Uh, we empty it usually every morning and at the end of the day, so if Friday's a shorter day.
So eventually they're, they're going there Friday afternoon through Monday morning?
Yeah, but I know when we did, um, you know, when, when we had it closed for COVID and more people were utilizing the drop off box, we did, I, I would come up here in the afternoon and check it just to make sure that there wasn't money sitting in there.
Let me ask you a utility question. So we're all on the same philosophical page. What happens if somebody, yeah, somebody comes, we're closed. Somebody comes to pay the utility bill, which normally they'd have until the end of the day to do at five. And they come in, uh, it's closed, so they drop it in the drop box and we, and they truthfully did get it before five on Friday afternoon and put it in the drop box, but we don't get it till Monday morning. Are they getting a late fee or do you give them that for the dollar?
No, um, we always process that deposit first before adding any late fees or anything.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't see it as received until Monday morning?
They dropped it in the drop off box?
On Friday afternoon, but you wouldn't know.
Yep, so when we walk in the door, we take the money out, come in, post the deposit and then put on late fees.
So that Monday, that Monday morning pickup would apply for Friday's drop off?
Yes, yeah.
Even if they, if they dropped it out Monday morning on their way to work?
Yeah, they're still fine.
On Sunday afternoon or whatever, and it was due on, by Friday at five.
Yeah.
So good, we've always given them that for the drop.
Yeah.
Good.
Any more discussion?
How many people have come in early or late? Can you give me a number?
I can't say. Um, at first I was, I meant to track it. I mean, I know the first day I came here and I was so excited because, oh, good thing we opened at seven thirty because there was people out here right, I mean, before eight, you know, not much before eight, but, and then summer happened and I didn't keep track of it anymore. And it's not a whole lot, but I don't think a lot of people are necessarily aware of it yet either. But I would, I mean, maybe ten to twenty throughout the summer were either here before, um, eight or after five, but.
I would say in a general sense, since COVID, people really do change the way they operate. You know, we, we've changed the way we use the drop box, you know, we've got the online pay in now and, and, you know, credit card, calling your credit card payments and stuff like that. So the way people do things has changed since all last year and I think that's kind of carrying into this year. Even during the day, we don't see the traffic we used to.
No.
It's going to now with the, I have the numbers here, they're kind of neat, so, you know, I don't think you'll see normalized fees for a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, I asked a question I shouldn't ask.
Uh-oh.
Are the numbers posted up for the picture?
The what?
The hours, the hours for now?
Yes, yeah.
Then what?
Seven thirty to?
Yeah, the seven thirty to five thirty ones are posted now.
Any level?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then I'll, um, I think we just put them down as summer hours, but I'll change.
Okay, okay.
Stuff like that, so.
And I assume the city staff is all in favor of this, if you're bringing it to the city council?
Well, I had to ask them. Yes, I've gotten, um, very positive feedback from staff on having Friday afternoons off.
Okay, any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by just saying aye. All the same, motion carry. Thank you. Item number 16, city administrator report.
Yep, I had department head meetings since the last meeting and also this meeting took more time to prepare for than any other. I'm a long time. I'm still doing some work on the wastewater treatment plant, power loss. Uh, it's more talking to vendors about their drills and the insurance company and trying to make sure everybody's on the same page. Um, see attended, I don't remember if this was, tried the last one or not. I attended a sludge meeting with West Central Turkeys and Team Labs and, and actually, uh, we have decided to go forward with a viral, a bug program at the, at the lagoons. Uh, West Central Turkey, I've talked to them and they're fine with what we've decided to do. Um, attempted account plan steering committee meeting, uh, and another MIND virtual meeting. Worked a lot on the 2022 budget with the budget committee, um, independently. I met with the pool committee, uh, some representatives to discuss the pool funding. So all the stuff that we talked about tonight, I did talk to them about. Um, and I thought they were going to be here to be a part of the conversation tonight too, but apparently they decided not to. I know they're just comfortable about the possibility of waiting for state funds. They see the reasoning for it, especially when you lay out the pros and cons of it and the finance position it puts the city in, but they're getting tired. Um, I coordinated, uh, some efforts to obtain some, some donation information for the whole project. And that, that had to do with, with taking information, um, talking with Dan, maybe off them donations and making sure that he understands, um, and everybody's on the same page as it relates to that, Phil. There hasn't been a decision or any type of a, um, number given from Dan yet as to if they're going to change their donation or, or, you know, we didn't want to ask him to, so we'll see what comes out of that. Um, had phone conversations with Northland Securities over the documents that we went over tonight. Also held a meeting with representative Jordan Rasmussen regarding the September 22nd House Capital Investment Meet, uh, tour to Pelican Rapids. We spent about an hour going over the logistics of that. Um, he gave us a lot of good information as to, you know, the types of things that we're going to want to talk about, present to them, um, talked a little bit about what he thinks we should have as far as show, a showdown there for, um, people, people from the community coming to show their support and that goes back to council, planning commission, pool, uh, you know, the school even, maybe bringing a class down there for a field trip, that, the class of a lot of, to show, to somehow display the diversity we really have. The other thing is Mark Dokken is going to work with Brian and they're going to have all flags out, the nationality flags on the Rotary Bridge. And as we go across the bridge, we'll talk about all these nationalities. Our representative had been representing Pelican Rapids, so they get a really good feel for how diverse we are because we think that's huge for them funding this project. Um, then, uh, we have, we're having problems down at the liquor store with their phone. We've had three issues over time and it's hard for, for the liquor store staff to even realize the phone's down because some people call the liquor store and say, hey, do you have beer there? You know, they just stop in when they need stuff, so the phone hardly is ever used. And so we've had two or three cases where, or incidences where the phone's been down for two weeks down there and nobody knows about it. And so, um, I've been working on, with Lake County Service Call up on that phone down there. We're not sure what the problem is, but it's a different type of phone because they've got the cordless portion of it. We're up here, it's all wired together. It's still a, a PBX phone, but because of the issues they're having, uh, Maggie strongly wants to go back to the old style phone. And in a, in a sense, I kind of agree with her. If they're not going to, if they, if they don't use the phones the same way we do up here and she keeps having these issues, Lake County would like, would like to take, make a change to the way the set, the thing is set up that they think will solve the problem, but I don't, I don't know if I want to mess with it anymore. I spend too much time on it when they find there's something wrong with it, so Maggie would like to switch back. So we're contemplating, it'll be a little bit of a cost to go back to Arvic putting their system back in or whatever, but it won't be that big a deal, not like it would be up here. So, um, we're looking at possibly doing that. And then, um, then with the city attorney and have discussions in preparing for the annexation decisions that you guys would have to make tonight, that's my report.
Okay, Don, uh, item number 17, mayor, I suppose if I said half of what Don did, that would apply. Okay, in a nutshell, I attended two Pelican Rapids Complект Streets Steering Committee meetings on August 12th and 24th. And I, Don and I have a West Central Turkey People Service, city staff, regarding the treatment of, uh, bugs in the lagoon and also at the wastewater treatment facility to decrease the sludge buildup. On 12th, 12th and 18th of August, I attended the Pelican Rapids Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting here at city hall, also, uh, Councilman Foster and Administrator Solgu and I had on the 19th, 24th and 26th of August for a budget committee meeting. Had an entry in the Burghitz Looney Days Parade on August 15th. Had a conversation with the mayor session at Historic City Hall on August 25th. Attended a local foods, local places Zoom Steering Committee meeting on August 26th and also a Zoom meeting at city hall on August 27th. Uh, with Administrator Solgu, Superintendent Olson, our personnel, met with Representative Jordan Rasmussen and Don mentioned before, discussing the possibilities of funding for a new pool and the walkway over the river restoration project. Met with Administrator Solgu yesterday to review the agenda for this afternoon's council meeting. And this afternoon, I met with, uh, people, uh, Reyna Zima, she was originally Reyna Benson, she just filmed me. And Kathy Coyle, who used to be on channel, uh, four TV years ago. They worked with the museum road show on Detroit, Becker County, and they did a film video of the, of the dam and the projected, uh, river restoration project that took place today. Any comments?
Thank you.
Seeing all their items, there's a motion to adjourn.
Who?
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by just saying aye. All the same, any adjournments?
Recording.
Was there anybody on there?
No, recording stopped and the lights lit up.
Oh, but, did anybody zoom in?
Oh, we had about eight people.
Probably.
Yeah.
Talked about the possibility of discontinuing that, or is that still a thought or not?
Discontinue what?
Zoom.
You know, I, I, I thought about not doing it tonight because of the technical issue I ran into last time, running two computers, but I thought, you know, this, this, this meeting had so much information, it was pretty important, one that I would have loved to see 50 people on the night listening to this conversation.
But now with, but now with the open numbers on the rise.
Yeah, I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep doing it now because I figured out my technical issue. It worked well. I need two computers to do it, but it worked well.